Well, I think we're ready to start the informal discussion with Polymath regarding the proposed 40B comprehensive permit at 269 North Avenue. And just, you know, to start, I would just like to say that the board was requested. The planning board is really just an advisory board in the 40B process. We don't really have standing to make decisions relative to the process. We were asked by the Housing Partnership to have this meeting. And so my, I guess what I would say is that if you, if, are you representing the partnership?
Yes.
Or the developer?
Yes.
What I would say is that it would be helpful, I guess, for you to walk us through any changes that you're anticipating that differ from the presentation that the planning board made its comments on initially. I think we're trying to decide, I think, whether there's ground for negotiation on any of the issues that we raised in our initial memorandum relative to this project. And just to read our introductory paragraph, it says that "The Western Planning Board strongly opposes the proposal of Polymath Development LLC for the creation of five single-family dwellings for market rate when affordable on North Avenue. The project is proposed as a local initiative project, LIP, and is seeking the support of the Western Housing Partnership under this program. While the planning board supports the construction of affordable housing in Weston, the project should fit seamlessly within the community. This proposed development lacks compatibility with the character of the neighborhood and faces a number of technical issues which have not been addressed." Is there anything about your presentation tonight that would, that would modify, that you think might modify the planning board's summary statement concerning the project? I think that's the question.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Brian Levy, and I'm the attorney of Polymath Development, and with me tonight is the project architect, Andy Zaleski, the project owner and property owner, Pat Duffy, and project manager, Mike Boucher, project engineer, Cynthia Terro, and that's the team. And what we have tonight is, was previously submitted to Betsy, which is a presentation on the design changes that we made to the homes. Since we were before you went, I hope that it's in your access.
It's actually not. It was emailed today.
Does that kind of be part of your presentation?
That is a presentation. So, just to put it in context.
Yep.
Since you last commented on that project, the Housing Partnership voted unanimously to recommend the select me, a five-year project, subject to resolving issues that were noted in your memorandum, memorandum, and others useful comments. And those really fall into two groups. One group is comments relating to utilities, infrastructure, and the project team has already started meeting with the town staff to work on those issues. Stormwater management, roads, things like that. And the second big piece is the design component. Because of the Housing Partnership, the public had comments on the objections to the style of the homes. The Weston Historical Commission had objections to the style of the homes. So we promised the Partnership that we would come back and discuss with you, and hopefully, the hope for this evening is that we will get comments from you, which will help guide us as we go to redesign the homes. So if that's sufficient, I would turn it over to our architect and then show you the alternative.
Well, just for clarification.
Yes.
What you're proposing to do is to limit your discussion tonight to the architectural design of the homes. You're not proposing any changes in the site plan. Is that correct from what we, what the planning board saw initially?
There will be lots of changes, but those are all being discussed.
But not yet.
Yeah, those are being discussed at the staff level with, there was a meeting with Betsy, the health agent and the town engineer, to get into all those detailed issues, infrastructure, roadway. So those are all, you know, as they must be, they have to be resolved. But we talked to the Housing Partnership. We thought that it would be best to start with the planning board to get input on the design of the homes, and that's why we're here.
So that's all you want?
Just input on the design of the home? Yes.
So we're mid-project. Actually, we're not even mid-project. We're sort of beginning.
We're at the very beginning.
The very beginning.
There are four different steps.
Okay. So this is really just an initial review of architecture. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And we're looking for your info.
But we're not, based on what you're telling me, I don't see anything in what you said that would alter our initial memorandum.
Well, I don't know how to answer that because we haven't seen the revised.
Well, the elevations. We're looking at elevations.
Correct.
Yeah.
In cycling.
No, that hasn't changed. It's just the elevations.
Well, no, he said it might change.
Yes.
So we won't see any of that.
We won't see any of it.
Right.
We're just looking at elevations.
We're just reviewing. There's nothing we can make a decision on or recommend anything or anything.
Well, we wrote a memorandum.
Right, I saw it by tape right now.
What would change our position relative to the memorandum?
I can't see anything.
Maybe, you know, the house designs could be an improvement over what was initially there, but to be frank, I mean, just, I'm taking up all the air here, but we're not allowed to address this, apparently, but the, we are, the nine-hundred-pound gorilla is the, is the density of the development. That drives all the other concerns that the planning board has. So if we, if we can't address the density, because it's apparently been approved by the committee and authority, the Housing Partnership, there's nothing we can do to change any of our concerns about the rest of the site planning on the project. So that's the, that's the conundrum that we have.
The question is whether the board would be willing to listen to our presentation and comment on it.
We can comment on the architecture, but I, I tell you upfront, I don't think we're going to change the language of our memorandum, at least not the initial statement.
Wouldn't it be useful if we worked off of the memo that we sent to you, there are 11 points, and then if maybe you go through each of those 11 points to talk about where that's changed and where it hasn't?
If any of ours changed, it's only the aesthetic quality.
Right. I understand. Some wouldn't be unchanged, but some will be, but at least we'll all be on the same page, though. Would that be a good structure?
What I heard, David, is that there are no changes other than the architectural design from what we initially looked at.
We have nothing else to show you tonight because all of the other items, or almost all the other items that are in the memo are things that the staff is looking at. So you covered on the stormwater management system. So the town engineer and our engineer have met and are discussing it. So that's nothing that.
Would you have any questions about any of those?
No, not at this time because we're still going back over to the staff.
No, I meant questions from us. Would you have any questions and look for answers from us or guidance from us? Not that we have authority to, you know, force you into anything or anything like that, but you're seeking advice, I think.
Yes, and primarily at this point tonight, we're hoping to get started with you on comments on the elevations.
Right.
Because we're just starting with the comments, all the other comments you made.
Yeah.
They largely relate to infrastructure and the details of the project, and we are working on those now already with other staff, people in the town.
Will you then be coming back to us with those ideas for our input or not?
Depends on.
I'm not sure.
Depends on whether we're asked to, David.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm asking them whether they would because that also provides a forum for the public and a public hearing.
I understand what you're saying. For example, stormwater management, okay? That's something which the town engineer and our engineer are going to sharpen their pencils and do their homework and make a plan that works, okay? There's little reason to bring that to the planning board because the town engineer is representing the town in that discussion. So the question is whether this board would be willing to represent the town in the discussion regarding the aesthetics of the project.
We often, we do have our own engineer who provides us with input on projects.
Different process.
So it's a different process, but it's additional eyes on, eyes on the problem.
So maybe I need to back up and explain that this is the very beginning of the 40B process.
Yeah.
And that when we go next, we'll have to go in front of the board selection. And the, unless the select me endorses the project, okay, it stops right there. If they say no, we won't endorse it. That's the end of the LIP, Local Initiative 40B, and then we on a different track from 40B. And we're sort of done walking down that path.
The friendly 40B versus the.
Versus what I call the normal 40B. Whatever. So.
That's a good way of putting it. I would love to.
If we get an endorsement from the select me, or if at some point we get what's called a site eligibility letter, we'll have to go in front of the zoning board who feels the permit requirement, and that's the point where the town would hire a peer reviewer to look over what the staff has done if they feel is necessary. So to do it again at this level, it's very early days, and it's really not necessary. So we're going to have to cross all of those bridges, and we will. We're just hoping at this point, because there's so many comments regarding the aesthetics of the project, that this board, which works on that issue all the time on many of its applications, we did get the benefit of your input.
So we're just looking at elevations. Who's doing the presentation on the elevations?
Mr. Wilson.
Go ahead, sir.
Do you think they're saying a motion from the floor?
When they're finished with their presentation.
It's about their presentation.
It's about the presentation?
Yeah.
Do you know what it is?
They have told us that they are not going to respond to the memo that you wrote in full, and they've told us that just they're not prepared to do that yet. So why don't we adjourn this meeting and call another meeting when they are prepared on a point-by-point basis to respond to your concerns expressed in that memo about this operation.
I need his name and address.
Jim, could you state your name and address for the record, Jim?
James Allman, 52 Spruce Hill Road.
And you're in a butter.
Not exactly, but I'm a maid.
Well, we've been asked by the Housing Partnership to review what they're, what they're prepared to present to us, and we've accepted the invitation that the Partnership made to us. If all they're going to present is elevations, we'll make comments on the elevations. But as I was trying to get across, I don't anticipate that that, that the presentation tonight will change the planning board's position relative to its summary statement.
So we couldn't expect the planning board to issue another memorandum saying that the discussion took place only about the elevation, and then most of your points are still unanswered?
Yeah, that's, that's going to be the, the.
So why are we wasting our time?
Because the Partnership, you don't have to.
No, I'm not going to.
Okay.
I know.
But the Partnership asked us to do this, and we're going to accept the invitation and listen to their presentation.
Okay.
Please, go ahead, sir.
There's the post, though.
Yeah, I have no idea how to, this is the control right here. Yeah, one of them says.
That says on.
That's it, it's on. It'll just take a second to pop off. I believe. Yep.
Let's see. Let's try again. There you go. Nice and proud. I thought I was pointing at that.
There you go. Look at that. Good.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Andrew Zaleski. I'm the president of the MZO Architectural Group in Stonem. We have prepared, this was the original concept that we presented to the Housing Partnership. It shows the five houses, shows it accurately. This was constructed from the engineering plans and from the architectural plans, so it is accurate to scale. Our original concept was to do, I could go out of use, it's the last meeting for using our cottage style, but I'm using it in the English sense, where the bedrooms are up under the roof and we have a low plate line. The reason we're doing that, obviously, this is a higher-density development. It keeps the shadow lines as short as possible as the sun moves about the sky, keeps the low eve line all the way around the houses. So that was really, we liked the style and we liked the marketability of it, and we also liked the fact that it had what we felt was the least impact on any of the neighboring properties. There were a lot of comments that the style was not good, but there weren't any comments of what might be good. So what I have done is taken our, our basic house plan, I've actually taken house number one, which is the one at the lower right, and offered some sketches of some potential. Oh, it's not working. It's working a little bit. There we go. Now that's backwards, okay. That's better. Okay. This is what I call Style A, just because of lack of any other names. It takes a little bit more of a colonial style and not so much a hip roof. It still keeps all of these, except for the final one, keep that cottage concept. It's not going to work with this. Get a little closer to it. There we go. What I've looked at right here, this is 263 North Avenue. This is the house that's just to the, to the east of our site. What I found was it shows a major element, in this case, a gambrel style, and a wing with the dormers. So it mixes the elements. It has a roof line that's, that's not just one big solid roof line. It doesn't have the hip roof on all sides. It does have the face, the gambrel face. So with this particular house, I, I took that concept, I did a more modest entry, just a simple eyebrow over the entry, again, similar to what you see at 263. Not a big porch, but a very nice, very beautiful entrance, but very modest in scope, doesn't project way out from the house. Trying to look at our neighbors and look at the, the character of their homes. This was another style, Style B, in my nomenclature. I did a little bit more of an entry element here, a little bit more of a porch element, borrowing from 251, which is a little bit farther up the, up the road to the east, but it has a little bit stronger element. I'm not really trying to copy these houses, I'm just trying to take the, kind of the character and the essence and use it in my design. I think, again, you can see that these houses are not overwhelmingly large. They have relatively small scale and small elements to reinforce that.
How many bedrooms did I have?
These houses have three bedrooms, I believe.
These, these two, the ones you're showing now?
Yes.
So that's 15 bedrooms.
Five houses? Yes. Okay, this is a little different style, again, changing the entry porch. I apologize that you're seeing stripes on there. That has something to do with the way the pixels work. These are not supposed to be candy striped houses. They are shingles and clapboards. It would be very much in keeping with the, with the neighborhood. What I looked at here was a little different style of porch to give the house a little different character, but still keeping the main gable. Comparing it with the next house on 245 North Avenue, which does have the double dormers. Actually, some of the double dormer features were in the previous style. But what I'm trying to do is relate the features of, of these designs with the neighboring homes so that it, it wouldn't be a clash. It would be something that would blend in. Again, the wing with the dormers and the gables, the entry porch. This one does have a garage on the front, which we're generally trying to avoid, trying to keep the garages a little bit more tucked around the side or the back so that they're not as prominent. This was Style D, which really centers the entrance right on the gable. This really borrows from the house immediately to the west, 273. It's running off the edge, but I think you can see, again, the very prominent gable on the front, very similar in scale, the detailing on the windows. Some of these have added a little bit of window caps to get a little more punch, a little bit wider corner boards. You can see on this one, I was putting a little bit more detail on the house. But again, trying to borrow from, that's our immediate butter to the west there. So it's the dormered roof, the prominent gable toward the street, and the entrance centered on the gable. Then my Style E, all of these are really the same house with different looks. This one really borrows from the next neighbor to the west, 277, which is a traditional two-story colonial-style house. I think if we did this one toward the east, it would have the least amount of shadowing on the neighbors. It does give us a taller roof line, but again, these are not, not huge houses. So I think we can do something with a little bit taller roof line, just to, to give it some variety. So what I'm trying to present is some different ways that we could approach these houses to give them different character. Our intent was never to have them all exactly the same, but certainly at this stage of the design, that was, that was what we had. And that, that hasn't really changed. My cottage style, which is the, really comes from the Old English thatched roof idea, where the bedrooms were up, up in the roof, traditional details, dormers, and really what we're proposing is the smart growth, where the, the land is utilized most efficiently, the small, small lots. And that really helps us do the affordable element of the project. And so that's where we started from, and what I'm offering is some other directions that we could explore, but I was hoping to get some feedback because, as I said, the feedback before with the architecture was bad, but it wasn't really much more detailed than that. So I'm trying to get a handle on what might be a good direction to go. Well, that's my presentation. Thank you.
They all repaint in white?
I'm sorry?
They all go repainted white?
Oh, I don't think so. I mean, this shows some little variation. I think we would do some subtle colors. I don't, I don't want to do the same color. I'd like to see some variation on it.
What is your land area for this project?
No, we got to get these people.
I know. That's all right. If you all could just, before you make a comment, well, first of all, let me just say that usually at this point in the presentation, we ask for comments from the planning board, but I think in this case, it's probably better if we solicit comments from the audience first, before the planning board makes its comments. If you could, before you make a comment or ask a question, if you could just give your name so that Betsy can take it. And address.
Okay, my name is Judy Allman, 52 Spruce Hill Road. I just wanted to ask, what is the actual land area in which this project is proposed? The amount of land that you have.
Yes. 1.5 acres.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I believe 1.5 acres. 1.5.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Peter Kirk at 263. Help. What is going to be the land footprint of each of these houses? Because much of the property is a hill, I believe it's only, is a hill, and that rendering doesn't show any houses on the hill. So of the land that's going to be occupied by houses, how much is that?
Okay, I would say the rendering is accurate. It does indeed show the hill. The hill is toward the back of the property, so the houses at the deepest are to the hillside.
The back houses actually go into the hill here.
I don't have the lot coverage number on hand, but the houses range in size from roughly 2,100 square feet to 2,700 square feet. Those are the initial proposals. Those are open for change.
The footprints are probably about 1,200 square feet each.
So you're probably going to use about an acre. At least five houses.
Excuse me if I may. The new and previous area on the site is about one-third of an acre. So that includes the roads, the driveways, and the homes.
Okay.
And then the rest would be yard and the porch, wooded area in the back.
Yeah, I just wonder how big is the wooded area in the back, and how big is the, how big is the land that the houses will be, or if you drew a rectangle.
Take up about two-gems in the site.
Right, it's about an acre.
And the coverage is about a third of an acre total, buildings and the pavement?
Yes.
Pat C, 254 Marion Street. What are you proposing to you about the wetlands in the back? Where that last house is, at certain times of the year, there's almost a drip running through it.
So we've been told by the Conservation Commission that they have, that there are no wetlands on the site, so I believe what you're referring to is a part of drainage issues, and those are things that our engineer is working with the town engineer to resolve those issues.
Anyone else?
Karen Kirk, 263 North Ave. Who is the, is the town engineer here tonight?
He's not here, no.
Okay, I spoke with, what are, are there two? Is there an engineer and an assistant engineer? And there, what is, what are their names?
Steve Fogg is the town engineer, and Rich Sweeney is the assistant.
Thanks.
Could you speak with Sweeney or Steve Fogg?
I have talked with both in the past, but nothing is.
You got a comment, sir? Here, Tony Leonard, 268 Marion. Just a detailed question on the rendering. Was the rendering also accurate with respect to the surrounding homes? That is, from that vantage point, can you not see any other surrounding homes? Or would homes be in that picture if you had included that in the conflict?
We did not include the homes in that rendering.
Okay. Would you have an estimate as to how many, how many houses would be in that rendering? Had you included them?
I have no idea. Probably at some point we will. I mean, they, they're all shown on the site plan.
Yeah, I got it. Just curious.
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that question. It wasn't done on purpose. We just, we did render the.
Yeah, I'm just curious for a minute.
Yes, sir.
Brian Johnson, 277 North Ave. I just wanted to get clarification regarding what the Housing Partnership's specific recommendation was. I know there's like a paragraph that was written, and what they said the, the planning board was responsible for reviewing. I'm wondering if we can read that off.
I can. What I can read is the record of vote from the Housing Partnership. It says, "At the, at the public meeting on February 25th, 2015, the five members of that Western Housing Partnership voted unanimously to support the proposal by Polymath Development LLC for the development of five home ownership, single-family housing units at 269 North Avenue, one of which will be affordable for approval by the board of selection as a local initiative petition, subject, however, to the following conditions. One, resolution of the concerns raised by."
One, resolution of the concerns raised by the planning board, except for the number of housing units. Two, resolution of exterior design issues with appropriate town representatives, both to be, both to the reasonable mutual satisfaction of Polymath and the town."
Okay. So, in tonight's meeting, there's no, you're not going to read your resolutions from a planning board perspective, because it's only talking about one component of your issues of the plan?
Correct. I think that's right.
And timing of when the Board of Selectment would likely meet regarding this project, do we know?
Betsy, do you know?
I have no idea.
Do you know, be after you've gotten to the point where you approve it?
We don't approve it. We're only offering comments. But this is, part of the issue is that we don't have any official authority here. We're just advisory, at this point, to the Weston Housing Partnership, maybe at a later time to the Board of Selectment.
Okay.
Yes?
I'd like to ask about the septic. Considering that there is wetlands in the back, is this going to be a closed system? Or is it going to be an open system?
I'm not sure what you mean by a closed system.
Closed system is they all go into one unit?
It's nothing like that.
How they pump constantly?
No, the system as proposed is designed as a conventional septic system, so it would be leaching trenches, collection into a tank, and then leaching trenches, like anybody else's backyard system. Most of that.
So five separates on one area?
No, it's going to be one system for.
One system for five houses.
Probably bathrooms.
So the system's designed for 17 bedrooms? That's the way the regulations are written.
Yes, sir.
I think the architect mentioned that he was looking for recommendations of kind of houses that they could look at. I think most of the houses on North Ave are actually historic homes, and these are modern interpretations of historic homes. I think Classic Colonial Homes and Connor Homes are two websites that I've seen that have historic-looking homes. And I think homes that are designed to look like they've been there for a long time would probably be more in keeping with the style of homes along North Ave versus kind of what I see as a little more modern interpretations of what a colonial or a colonial-style house would look like.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir?
Just, I think, obviously, a pretty good architect, and the planning board has done a lot of work with a lot of houses in town. I just, I think that the one issue that's really not on the table, that won't be put on the table by Polymath, is the one that would prevent really probably any of those houses, and the best architect in the world, doing his best work ever, from coming to a good solution, which is that they're going to buy them. And you can't have five masterpieces that close to each other, which is not going to look good, no matter what they look like, so.
Right. And as I said at the beginning, the partnership has taken that discussion out of our hands, so density is something we can't address. Pardon? Getting over a flu. We can't address it here, but it isn't, it is a concern that, you know, this is a very dense proposal in what is a recognized historic neighborhood. You know, it's a designated National Estate Registered Historic Neighborhood, so it's a different, it's a different kind of development, and will have an impact on the character of that neighborhood. Yes?
Thalia Price, 71 Arrowhead, Weston, Mass., member of the Housing Partnership. I was very glad to sit here and listen to a rather unfriendly attitude toward the Housing Partnership. All we wanted was to have the process of a dialogue continue. If the Housing Partnership had not said at their meeting and voted unanimously to let lease, to let Polymath at least have the opportunity to appear before boards, we would have felt it was not, it was, it would not, they could have said goodbye and stopped the lit process, started the, quote, not unfriendly, the alternative process for want. And that's not what this town should be about. Boards should be open and welcome to discussion, whether they think they can, whether they have any kind of right, as the planning board does not, to make a decision. But I think I have to say, I'm very disappointed in the reception that the planning board has given to Polymath. They are at the very beginning. How can, if this town is going to come together to look at affordable housing, it needs to start at the beginning and have these kinds of discussions. Weston has become ripe for developers to come in secretly, just like something is happening on Concord Avenue, and saying, "We don't, we want nothing to do with the town." At least Polymath has at least been open enough to take their knocks at all these meetings and try and work with the town. I think that is the most important thing that we can do in the democratic process.
Why did the partnership take density off the table?
Because Polymath said that that was not negotiable. All right, fine, that is not, it came from eight down. But that would not stop the Housing Partnership from saying, "All right." Because of all the other issues that all the other town boards are going to have to deal with, it may come to a choice by Polymath to have to reduce the number of units. But that was not our decision to make, and that was not our door to close on a continuing discussion. If this, we would not be having this discussion tonight with all its positive and negative attitudes unless the Housing Partnership said, "Let's see what happens in the process." And the planning board, all we expected from the planning board was to look at, what was it, elevation or architectural design? That's all I think anybody expected here tonight. But it's at least looking at something instead of closing the door.
Buzzy, a couple of things. First thing, nobody's hostile towards the Housing Partnership. We understand that we. You're looking skeptical.
I am looking skeptical. I am looking skeptical. I probably wouldn't have said anything, except the name of the Housing Partnership has come up, and I'm sure it will be in the records. I don't know how many times is the starting point for this issue. The selectmen said that the house, that all lit procedures all have to come before the Housing Partnership first. So we were the very first board that Polymath, quote, "had to come to by a directive from the selectmen." So, having met with them a number of times, having seen their willingness to at least verbally talk, all right, not about the five, but you never know what's going to happen. It may very well be because of all the other issues, the drainage, the septic, the whatever, that they will be forced either to reduce the square footage of the houses, to make them smaller, or not go along and go through the state process.
The only point I was making about the partnership's decision was that you specifically said that the number of houses couldn't be discussed.
Not, not, no, not, I don't know where it's.
Well, it's right here in the resolution.
Cannot be discussed. It said that we were not going to do anything about it. It was off the table. That doesn't mean it can't be discussed, and a lot of it will depend upon what the other boards in town.
But, Buzzy, let me just read.
Go ahead.
I'm just reading the vote, the Housing Partnership vote. I'm not being hostile. I'm just trying to understand. The vote says, "Resolution of the concern, the first task is resolution of the concerns raised by the planning board, except for the number of housing units."
Right.
But the number of housing units is central to all of the other planning board's concerns.
I agree with you on that. But that doesn't mean that the planning board and all the other boards, because of their input, will change that or alter it. The Housing Partnership isn't going to say, "It's absolute. They have to do it with five houses, or they're not going to do it because it's not economically feasible." It doesn't make any difference. The other boards and their input will show Polymath whether it's, whether it's going to even be allowed. That's all.
Okay. To me, everything pivots on the density.
That's fine. So you've discussed the density.
Well, we can't.
I mean, not you as the planning board. I'm not saying you. But you have great, that's great experience with architectural things.
No, we have experience with site planning.
Oh, site planning. All right, so, so, so are you thinking that there was no reason for Polymath to come before the planning board?
The building, the architecture is perhaps the least intensive thing that we review.
Right.
We review coordinated site plans. That's what we do on a weekly basis. But all of the issues with this project are connected to the density of the project. So essentially, 90% of what we typically do on a weekly basis is off the table. We can't talk about it. And that's, 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 it's not a matter of being angry or hostile. We just, we, we were proscribed from discussion of the thing that we do the most.
You're not proscribed. You can say right here that you do not believe that the density is appropriate for the 1.5 acres. Nobody prevents you from saying that.
Well, we did say that, but we can't talk in detail about the various factors that play into the density issue, because it's, it says, "Resolution of the issues the planning board issues, except for the density of the project."
But you can't resolve it. The planning board doesn't have the authority to, to say, am I correct, that this is inappropriate density? Maybe I'm, does it?
We're making recommendations.
That's fine. That's exactly, thank you.
But we can't make recommendations.
Yes, you would recommend that you don't feel that the density is appropriate for the 1.5 acres. That is the planning board's concern, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. So that is a recommendation?
Yes.
Fine.
It was our first recommendation.
That's fine.
All the other issues that we, all the other concerns we have flow from that single basic issue.
All right, so what the process would be then? If Polymath never came before the planning board, never came before any other boards in town, but did go to the engineers, Board of Health, those boards, and got approval based on drainage and septic and all the things that they would have to do, and complied with all the state rules. Remember, the state has the final say in this. But isn't it worth, at least in open discussion, so everybody in this room knows what you're feeling, I think just knowing how strong you feel about the inappropriates of the density is very important.
That's what we say in our memorandum.
But this is, memorandums are fine, but having an open discussion is even better. So for that point, Polymath now has a much better sense of who you are, where you're coming from, and in a process, everybody's opinion, people hear you, it should be heard. It's like an open forum.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification. It's really appreciated. Yes?
Yes. Precious, 254 Miriam Street. I am the local historic preservation chairman of the Brothers of the American Revolution, and I have to tell you that on my own personal thing, that I consider this far-trudance a project on historic and scenic road. The design of the houses, as far as I looked at them, looked fine to me. A little small, perhaps, but, but it's just the whole big issue. And the thing is, the way the hill comes down, the dampness in the back, it's just too much. And it's far too dense.
Okay, thank you. Any other, yes, when?
At the partnership meeting, a question came up about whether four or five was or wasn't economically viable. And I think the developer claimed that four wasn't economically viable. And then I think the question was asked, are there financial statements, or are there pro forma statements that prove that out? And those were not available at the time, but that would be interesting to look at at some point, is to really understand why five is so viable and four is not.
Yes, just a quick thing to the record. You learned before that the site of the house was in some historic district? Yes. According to my understanding, the house is not in a local historic district. And it's not in a national, it's not a national register. North Ave. It's in a north-alien historic area. Yeah, that's.
It's a national register.
It's a National Estate Registered District.
That's a filing that's made six thousand.
Yeah, I know. I was 14 years the chairman of the historic. Anybody else? Good. Comments from the planning board?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the original presentation. Buzzy raises a good point, all right, so maybe five is a lot. In fact, it's way too many. But what about the size of those buildings? Five smaller, reduced footprint buildings might look better than five huge ones. It's, and I, you know, this is probably going to go in no matter what, so we have to work with it. But did you reduce the footage?
The houses are relatively modest. I mean, they're just over.
What is relatively modest?
2,000 square feet, which by Weston standards, those are.
Yeah, but we're not, this isn't Weston standards. This is 40B. So, you know, how big do they have to be? Can they have one car garages? Can you decrease area? I would think, yeah. You need to do a markup.
I mean, we're not doing 4,000 foot hours. We're doing 2,000 foot hours, considering they're pretty modest in size.
But there's always room, isn't there? There's always room to move one way or the other on this. I mean, I understand you're really maximizing, you know, your profit. I get that.
In your presentation, you said that.
Yes.
That size was negotiable. You actually said.
Yes. No, we can, we can work on that.
Because it's a big coverage on that lot. And if every, I mean, if it does go up in the rear and there's drainage problems and everything's going to be crowded into the front of it, five big houses, and I know you're right by Weston standards, anything under 10,000 is kind of tiny.
I'm not trying to be facetious, but I think they're pretty modest. I mean, I can live in a 13, I just want a house.
It would be modest on a single lot. Individual houses. But to have so many houses on a single lot.
Right.
Yes.
It's not modest, I mean, ratio-wise. So that's, ratio-wise, it's a lot, so.
And you wanted us to comment on the design.
Yes.
Of course, now it's been so long, I can't remember. But I think there were a couple that. I didn't think A was too good. What do you think? I'm not the taste police. So, I didn't like A with its sharp angles. B had the potential to be a little bit more cottage-like. And I, and that's, yeah, B, I thought it was kind of cute. And I guess probably my favorite would have been C. And I'm so sad, this is taking some example house.
But those are the.
I know, but there was one that was, and then D is kind of cute, too, except it's got kind of all this fancy business going on. But there, but I think that's, D is taken off of 273 North Ave, which is a sweet-looking house. So, I don't know, anybody else care? Way you have us, because these guys are dark. Because obviously, you wouldn't do the same house repeated five times. You try to.
That's true. I'm trying to establish a little bit. We're trying to establish a little bit of a palette here where we can, can give it some variety.
And each house wouldn't have to be at two thousand square feet. You could have one house that could be a little bigger and then the others could be smaller. I mean, I think you should distribute the space. Try and work with that lot, that tiny lot, 1.5 acres.
Let's see acreage?
One acreage?
1.5 acres.
But the houses will all be, so one is...
Yeah, yeah. The houses will all be crammed into one section or close to the street, right.
I guess my feeling is that the, you know, the, the direction is okay, but, um, we have to get into the specifics of the design issues, because we went further into the project. You know, what, the suggestion is that there'd be a variety, um, and so we need to take a close look at, at how, how these houses fit together. The ones on the hill, I would try to keep as low as possible, because otherwise they're going to loom.
So you don't want your little classic colonial back on the hill?
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe you like that down the front. So, I mean, a lot of these things we should do with the site plan, you'll finally come up with.
Right, exactly. But then we'd be talking about the screening, cutting letters and all sorts of other things that we normally talk about.
Right.
But, but getting away from the pure hip group into the, it sounds like you've given some feelings over it.
Yeah.
But I think the idea is, you want to keep massing the houses as low as possible.
I, I do.
Therefore cottage-style, having the very low eve, whether it's B or C, it's all kind of decoration at that point. But it's keeping the houses looking as small as possible, because I can't get past the density of it and how inappropriate it is compared to its surroundings. Just, they're so close to North Ave, and then after that, they're so close to each other.
The two max, the setbacks of adjacent homes, I disagree with that.
Well, I, I don't know, have we seen that? Have we seen the site context?
No, no. The site plan does show the adjacent homes. Yeah, we did, we did keep the setback.
Because I don't, well, that, I don't remember that, but just looking at that initial rendering that you did, it looked like they're very close to North Ave. But it, it's hard for me to give a half the density, because it was just, in another town, you know, Winthrop or Newton or someplace, it would be fine, but in that particular area, it's just so wrong, so.
The other thing is, there are big street maples, big sugar maples on the street, or at least there were from the Google map that Stephen and I were looking at. Is that correct? Are there big mature sugar maples, like two or three of them on the road?
Yeah.
There, there are two existing trees in the, at the street. One of them is dead. The other one, still alive, yes.
Are you going to make, are you trying to plant to say that those street trees?
Um, no, but we'll be planting others.
What will you be planting? Like little ornamentals? Street trees that...
We're, we're planting street trees. The landscape plan that we presented shows street trees both along North Ave and then also up the drive, the common drive. So I don't know, we haven't really determined species yet, but, um, we have a landscape architect on the team. They just haven't really engaged yet. We want to get the site plan done.
It speaks back to the size, footprints of the house in terms of having enough room to be able to, uh, shield and use your landscape effectively, so that, you know, what's there is not necessarily what's in people's faces.
Do you know how many of the existing trees will be removed, or what percentage of the existing trees will be removed?
Uh, we haven't really done that analysis specifically.
Will any trees remain outside of the area up at the top?
It's hard, it's hard for...
So you're saying that the, the, the street tree, one of the large street trees that's still alive, you're expecting to lose?
Yes. Based on the current site plan, yes, that's correct.
No scaling, they'll just be?
Yeah.
Five houses.
So you lose a lot of...
You lose a lot of the mess, you know, in terms of scale.
We're going over the same things.
All right, well, then, this is probably done.
The only thing I would say is, with respect to the houses near the street, I would, I agree with it, to try to keep the eve height low, but I would tend to make those more sort of classical and less sort of English cottage, you know, asymmetrical, sort of, like capes or something like that.
More American, less British.
Okay?
I, I am fighting one thing that I'm kind of my own worst enemy, is by making the roof lines low, it does spread the footprint. So I mean, I could make them three-story tall, make the footprints tiny, but I really didn't want to go that route. I would rather make footprints a little bit bigger, but keep, keep everything really low.
Again, that goes to the square footage. But I have a question. If you're going to be keeping the front of the houses back consistent with the other houses along the street...
Yes, we are.
And then, and then you have a, and I, I can't point it out on, you know, the map or anything, but you have a big, a large street tree along there, why does that need to stay?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The location of the new drive is, it had to move from where the existing entrance driveway was to accommodate, to accommodate.
So how large a tree is it that you're, you're going to be losing to accommodate the driveway, which is, can be designed, but, you know, may not be your first choice design, but...
We can, uh, we, we're certainly open to looking at it again, um, just telling you what the plan shows right now.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't know, I don't have that information.
So that would be the kind of thing we would encourage you to think about.
Okay.
Like, if this is a, a tree that's, you know, this big around, that's got a lot, a lot of value aesthetically, not just to everybody who drives on the street or walks on it, but to the people who are going to live there.
Right.
So if you can work around that and preserve it, that, that is in everybody's interest.
So, so we could take, take a good look at?
Troy?
I don't think it would be terribly helpful. I mean, I, I challenge, this is such a constraints site, and it's so difficult to, to make it not look incredibly dense.
Okay, then, to the, yes?
I'm Diana Chaplin, 26 Loveling. Um, regarding the density and the cost, I, I didn't know if it would be possible, since, you know, you can do by law in some cases, four, uh, units with one affordable, and if maybe we could keep the cost down for Polymath and instead of making them spend so much during this process, they would be, maybe there's a number or an incentive that would help them reduce the density in exchange for not spending so much money during the permitting process to keep it all affordable, since that is the notion, just a broader question, maybe not just for money.
Diana, but that's, again, that's not, that's, that's the partnership and the selectmen.
So, Buzzy, maybe you could take that?
I would be glad. We don't, we have less authority than the Planning Board. In terms of influencing things. We're just kind of the conduit that conversations are brought forth. So, as I said, since the Selectmen said that any development in town, new, existing, whatever, has to come through the Planning Board, I mean, has to come through the Housing Partnership. And then it goes everywhere. So anybody's suggestions about any, I think Polymath would be open to looking at. Good point.
Good. Um, so you've, you've gotten our feedback, we've made some comments on the elevations, and, um, I, I guess the ne, I don't know what the next step is, but we will send our comments to the Housing Partnership and to the Selectmen and, um, then continue from there. Thank you so much. Great, thank you. Thank you. Good night.